You can join in. Okay. So, uh. I see. Plan discussion meeting, Fortuna, this meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act. That's currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, Governor's Emergency Declaration of the COVID. During this meeting, people, anybody that is out there in listening or watching, there be prompts to call in, sign in, whatever you want to do to get in and talk about this, and we would love to hear from you. We'll flash some stuff up on the screen for everybody can see. So tonight, we're gonna do, start with opening the flag salute. Everybody understand during this, we don't have everything like we normally do. There's no disrespect in that in any way, shape or form that we're all not doing it. I'm going to perform the flag salute as we start. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, can I get a roll call, please?
All right, Commissioner Blakely, let me know he would not be here. Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Church?
Here.
Commissioner Hallie?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers, let me know that he would not be here. Chairman Mobley?
Here.
And Commissioner Sykes?
All right, just thank you. All right, can we get approval of the minutes from December 8th, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I second that.
It is just one of those we can do. All in favor, say aye. Katie?
I, I believe we do need a motion for this one.
Uh, the motion was made and seconded.
Oh, yes, so. Let me do a roll call, sorry. I haven't done this since last year.
Yeah, it's been a little while. We're a little out of whack.
All right, Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sykes?
Can I stand on this one since I just joined?
Uh, yes, you may.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, we're gonna open it up to oral comment from the public. Anybody out there that wants to talk about anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Katie's gonna give you a phone number to call in. There's IDs and passwords and the whole thing. Please call in, talk to us, tell us what's on your mind. Remember, we're gonna give you about three minutes. If, uh, we don't have a whole lot of people, we might give you a little bit longer. We cannot act on anything at this time. So anything that's not on the agenda, we cannot act on. We can listen to you, but we can't take any action during. Write it down, call it in. They're gonna flash it again and again, so you can see it. So giving everybody a little bit of time out there. So Katie, are we hearing anything, seeing anything? Nothing's happening? Okay, we're gonna close public comment. If anybody calls in or gets through after we started, please let us know. We'll kick them in there somewhere. All right, so our first order of business tonight, the public area, and to consider approval of a minor subdivision of a 4.4 acre parcel. End due, four residential parcels ranging in size from 0.46, just 0.76, and a 2.3 acre. The owner is Susan Campbell, and this is on south of Berry Creek and Redwood Drive. So can we get some background on this, please? Because it looks like there's a lot of background on this.
Yeah, I think there is a lot of background. I think it's a fairly straightforward project. There are a couple of issues that are, you know, different from probably our, our, you know, just a really perfectly straightforward one, but I think everything's ironed out pretty well. So the applicant is proposing a minor subdivision of a 4.4 acre parcel. It's got the two APN numbers, but it's one legal parcel. Into four parcels ranging in size from .46 acres to .76 acres. And also a remainder parcel of 2.32 acres. Just as an aside, a remainder parcel is really a designation created by the Subdivision Map Act, so it's, you know, it's, looks like a fifth parcel, but it's called a remainder parcel. So it's kind of a, it's a, you know, I don't want to call it a leftover because it's a parcel, but for parcel counting purposes, we've got four parcels and a remainder. So they're all, you know, gonna be developed and all habitable. They just have a funny designation because that's what the map act does. So, um, to go on to show you the location and the tentative map, I'm gonna put that on the screen now. Okay, so this is the location map on an aerial, and you can see the project is on this large, a portion of this large vacant area here. This is the Longdale area of Fortuna. And then I think this is the Sinistrero subdivision up here, and it can emerge right around Springville Avenue. Longdale is an older, older, probably 1950s and 60s subdivision area, and then Sinistrero. So it's kind of the last piece where those two merge. And it's on the north side of Redwood Way. Rounerville Road, Newburgh Road, and Fortuna Boulevard, and then on a close up, we've got Springville Avenue running parallel and Guido on the east side. And then Second Avenue actually extends, would extend through the parcel. It was intended to because we've got Second Avenue on the Longdale side, and then a tiny little portion of Second Avenue here at Guido. And then Shamrock up above and Prairie, or Berry Creek Avenue comes right into the north edge of the parcel. So you'll see these roads on the subsequent tentative map. And then the other feature of note is Strong's Creek at the southeast end of the parcel, or it's just actually off the site. So it's not actually on the parcel. It's on the parcel adjoining to the south, but it is in the vicinity. And you can see it runs from Newburgh Park along this area here, and then it will continue across the boulevard and into the Yale River. And then this is a zoning map, so it is residential, single family. The parcel itself, and then all of the area around it, Longdale and Sinistrero. The R16 zone does allow a minimum of 6,000 square foot lot sizes. And so this project does fit with that. The parcels range from 27 or 20,000 square feet to 33,000 square feet. So they're quite a bit larger than the 6,000 square foot minimum, and then the remainder is 101,030 square feet, which is 2.32 acres. So this is the tentative map, which you did receive a large scale copy of that. The map here, and then project information, and then a right of way detail up here in the corner. I did do a focused resume on just the tentative map with the parcels highlighted. So you can see parcel one, two, three, and four, and then the remainder. And it's, there's a lot going on because, because of where this is located, it's at the kind of the convergence, or what would be, would have been an intersection of Berry Creek, which will give access to parcel three, and then parcel one and four. Guido off to the right, and then Second Avenue. Giving access to these three parcels. And then Springville over here on the Second Avenue portion. Really what's creating the blockage that preventing that intersection is the presence of these wetlands. Excuse me. And they run, the wetlands run kind of on a north-south access in the western portion of the property. They also run, they continue through the parcel to the north and the parcel to the south. And I will have more information on the wetlands themselves and how they were mapped. You can see that they do kind of block the continuation of the road system. What is proposed is keeping the underlying right of way for this portion, the unused portion of Second Avenue and the unused portion of the Berry Creek connection. That will be created as a, what's called an irrevocable offer of dedication, so that if someone wants to subdivide in the future, and if anybody wants to, it kind of, it kind of leaves the option open for anyone to, you know, go through the regulatory channels to create a crossing here, or to relocate and fill the wetlands. You know, all of that would be highly regulated and permitted through the state and federal agencies. But, you know, just as a kind of long term, we always look at the long term and keeping connections open. So that's why we decided to keep that right of way, the potential for the right of way there. So in the future, if anyone wants to, you know, create a public road, the irrevocable offer of dedication is there. And what that means is that the city can accept the right of way and make it a public access or public road at any time. So it kind of holds it in place. But meanwhile, for this subdivision, the only right of way that will be accepted will be the roads needed to give access to these parcels, as well as give access to the adjoining parcel to the south, so that they can subdivide as well. Let's see. And then the map does show existing utilities, so water, sewer. I think storm drain is in this, in, in the road as well. AT&amp;T, PG&E, and SunLink are all existing because the area is so well-developed. The infrastructure is in place and at current standards, so you know, the most that this subdivision needs to do is extend those utilities through the road. And then as well, the city did work with the Fortuna Fire District, as we do on all subdivisions. And we always want to work closely with them and make sure, you know, the other agencies, that their needs are met, and their standards are met, and that they can continue to serve these new parcels. And so the fire chief, you know, worked closely. We made sure that he reviewed the, the road system, so the road widths and the turning radius. And then in this case, because the roads, and we want to make sure that he is satisfied with the turnaround abilities, so we've got this sort of T-intersection at Second Avenue and Berry Creek, which he reviewed and approved. And also at the end of Berry Creek Avenue, there's, this area is intended for a turnaround. So it's reserved as a right of way for that purpose. And then, in addition, all of the agencies, including the Fire Department and all of the utility agencies, will be reviewing the improvement plans. You know, the construction plans for the road and the infrastructure, and review those plans, and we'll have the signatory, right, so they will sign off on those to make sure that their standards are designed into the project. So I think that's it on this map, and we can go back and look at it when you have questions. This is the wetlands map that was created. So for the wetlands, so that what this map shows is a delineated, delineated wetlands approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. They're the approving federal agency. So the wetlands are in blue, and then the yellow lines are the, roughly an estimate of the, the property lines. So the parcel in the middle is the subject parcel, and then there's parcel to the north owned by Thompson, and then the parcel to the south owned by the Stevens. And, you know, you can see that the wetlands really crosses all three parcels. And a wetland study was done for the, for all three. And then the second wetland study that's referenced in the report was done just for these two parcels to kind of confirm the boundaries. They wanted to be sure before it got delineated that the wetlands were accurate, so they got kind of like a second opinion. And then the next step was the Army Corps of Engineers reviewed it, did whatever they needed to do, go to the site and mapped it, you know, confirmed the mapping. And then they issue a letter and this map that is called a preliminary jurisdictional determination. And because they have the authority over wetlands, that map becomes official. So this is the wetlands. And it kind of, you know, informs everybody and protects the wetlands, and it also then gives the property owners the ability to have the confidence to develop the rest of their property. So, you know, we know that there aren't any other wetlands in this area because it's been visited by these professionals, and then we know that this is the area to be protected. So, um, it is on this parcel, it's 1.3 acre wetlands is on this, on the Campbell property. In addition to those studies, the Fortuna general plan would normally establish a 50-foot setback around wetlands, kind of as a protective buffer. The general plan does allow a reduced setback when that is supported by a professional's you know, report. So in this case, the applicant did submit a report, so by a consulting wetland specialist. And so that report, that professional did recommend a 25-foot setback that would not impact the wetlands. And, you know, he provided it kind of a detailed letter explaining why that was justified for this wetlands. And really, um, you know, this is an isolated wetlands. It's not connected to any water feature. It's not really connected to Strong's Creek. It's not associated with it. It was basically, most likely created by the runoff from Shamrock and directed into this property. I think the idea was that, you know, this is the last parcel, and then it would have been, it was expected to develop, and, you know, in that case, a storm drain system would have been installed. And that didn't happen. That was delayed, and this wetland was created. So that's how it got there. So it's, basically, that's why it's an isolated wetland. It doesn't have any valuable habitat associated with it, so that, you know, you can see there is no riparian vegetation as you would, as you see on Strong's Creek. Riparian vegetation is also a protected type of vegetation. But in this case, the field, you know, the field has been mowed and disced, and the site is really just a continuation of that kind of vegetation, is grass, you know, non-native grasses. There aren't any shrubs or trees or anything to be protected. So because of that, that 25-foot setback is recommended. There are conditions that are recommended and incorporated into the conditions of approval that would protect the wetlands and the 25-foot setback. And those conditions include measures, construction phase measures, fencing, fencing that 25-foot setback. You know, really identifying it to keep trucks and equipment out and to avoid, to prevent that area's use as for stockpiling and material storage. And then a condition to install, like a, just a decorative fence, like split rail or something around on that boundary, and that would delineate the wetlands for the, for the future property owners. So let them know what's there and where it's at. And also to support that, we would record a notice of special development conditions, which also, you know, that gets recorded on the title so that future property owners, you know, as they purchase the property, they are aware that, hey, this, you know, this wetland area, it isn't going to be able to be developed, and it can't be filled, you know, that's a federal, filling a wetland is a federal violation. So, you know, it's just kind of a disclosure that, that that well one is there. So that, those measures will protect the wetland itself. And then the last issue is, there was a correspondence that was submitted, one letter from Abe Stevens, and he is a property owner to the south, and that letter was included in your planning packet. And let's see what we have. So he has two issues. One is the right of way alignment. Oh, that's why I have this one on here. So the right of way alignment that he would like to see straightened out, I believe, is right here where the, where the right of way borders nears his property. And it is drawn with a curve at the, at the base, and that's to align with the, the previous right of way that has been abandoned and then relocated. So let's see, the history on that, let's see. So this is, I think, 1980s era subdivision of, this is the project parcel, and then there's the parcel to the north and the Stevens parcel, and you can see Springville over here. And what this subdivision did, in addition to creating these two smaller neighborhoods, it established the right of way for the, for the road system. So it created, you know, ensured this connectivity, and it looked at the whole area, and this is how the roadways were supposed to be, and then all of the lots would get filled in along the roads. But then the wetlands happened, and then just time went on, so you know, we're left with these three large parcels, and then trying to just subdivide around the wetlands. So what Mr. Stevens did, he purchased his property and built a house here, kind of in the vicinity between the road and the creek, in order to just have a better location away, you know. With regards to the road, we had to establish setbacks, building setbacks and things. So it was in his interest to realign it, abandon that old road, and realign it to push the road up, make a sharper turn here, and then a cul-de-sac. So that's the right of way that's actually dedicated there now, and that's a dedicated offer of right of way. It's not an actual road yet until the city accepts it. So the city engineer is recommending that this not get cleaned up, that, well, basically that it can get cleaned up on the map. So there's no need to condition it, so we just want to reassure Mr. Stevens that, you know, this little curve is kind of insignificant enough where the map doesn't need to get changed. And also, you know, we're not sure what the curve needs to be because, because the Stevens map is really just basically a sketch. It's not engineered, so we don't know what this curve is going to need to be. You know, if, if we straighten it, it's not gonna make, uh, there's not gonna be the proper curve there. So we're just recommending that it get, you know, no change be made. It's really not consequential at this point to change the, the angle there is because we really don't know what the angle needs to be until it gets, there's some engineering that needs to go on here. So that's kind of not really an issue to the city. And then the other concern is that he would like to see this paving. So on the subdivision, the paving is proposed to stop at the driveway to parcel one and to parcel four. And the reason for that is, so typically, you know, this is kind of a typical thing that the first developers in pave to the end of the traffic impact that they, that they create. So the traffic generated by this project basically isn't going to be using this road. We have a turnaround here that's going to be adequate for anybody coming in and needing to turn around. And so later developers who follow in will continue the paving to their development. So that's kind of a normal feature that, that goes on with subdivisions. In this case, all of these parcels are, you know, a half, a half an acre or larger. And so they really all have the potential to get subdivided, so we kind of expect that, you know, someone that come in and buy parcel one and put three or four parcels there. They'll need to pave the road because now they're, they've got driveways off of Berry Creek. Same thing with parcel four, parcel two, and parcel three. So we, you know, with the applicant coming in, he wanted to do a minor subdivision. Those are a quicker process. Even after they get recorded, they don't need to go to the Department of Real Estate, you know, the, the cost is just less. But, you know, we see that these parcels very likely, you know, could be subdivided. I think it would be wise for anyone who bought this for their own purpose would. And this is what we advise people, you know, to design their property so that in the future, it can still be subdivided. Because we, you know, we, we want to see more infill development and affordable housing, at least the potential. So that's kind of what we expect. And then also, the Stevens parcel can get subdivided, so at that time, you know, those are the times when Berry Creek will get paved, and, and we know that. So it is in the conditions of approval under the engineering section that the paving stop here, and that future, future parcels, future development will pave that section of Berry Creek. So I hope that was clear. I know that's a lot of information. But I'll be happy to answer any questions, and then we do recommend, staff recommends adoption of Resolution P 2021 3056. I'll hand that back to the commissioners and the chairman.
Thank you, Liz. That was a lot. All right, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns that they want to talk about on this project? Anybody out there can hear anything? Okay, can't hear nobody. All right, so I got a couple issues with it. So mine is the parcel two or three around the wetlands as a, one, a 25 instead of a 50. And then what we're just, what you were just talking about as far as going back and cutting them up into smaller parcels. People are going to start talking about, to me, when I'm looking on the, sorry, I'm gonna go to different places. Looking on the Google Earth and, and knowing what I know about going out in that, walking out in that field is that parcel two and three where that comes together, that's like the deepest point. If walk out there tonight, probably going about two to three feet of water. And it seems like a big area that they're gonna be cutting out of that, and then you gotta have 25-foot setback off of that. It seems like a whole lot when you start to talk about breaking up those parcels into smaller parcels. But that'll be for further concerns later, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we have it mapped. So it's one level of security, and it will be fenced, you know, I, hopefully that fence will stay there. We can't guarantee that it'll stay there, but when these properties are purchased, you know, there'll be some kind of a fence. We don't want to put any imposing fence, so whatever they think is, whatever the developer thinks, you know, I, I mean, I think a split rail or something like that that looks nice, is decorative, it fits in with the residential. But it'll be there to some degree.
And then the other part is Berry Creek going straight through to line up to the other end of it. It's going through part of that between parcel two and three. It's going through part of that, um, between parcel two and three to line all that up. They said, uh, future development. It just seems a little odd to me that you're going to have to pave through where you know that there's wetlands that we're going to be dealing with in the future.
Yeah, what it, what it would require is a lot of coordination and a lot of planning. So that road will never go through there without, um, you know, without working. So someone either, you know, whether it's just someone who owns, whether there's different owners or one owner, different owners who could work together to relocate the wetlands. And that's something that gets done. Um, Strong's Creek Plaza, that developer relocated the wetlands. Um, so we know that can be done. And this is not a lot of wetlands here. So usually replacement wetlands is like a two to one or three to one ratio depending on the quality. So it's not a lot of replacement wetlands.
But, but that's in the future. That's definitely going to have to happen with what you're talking about. And then that turnaround there, where that turnaround is projected just seems a little odd too. That, the whole thing seems a little odd to me. I, that's just the whole project. I can see the, the parcels to the south, the parcels to the north just seem completely odd to me. It just, you're going to go fight the fight later on. Um, and to bring it up now just seems a little weird to me, but.
Yeah, it's actually, I think, it's actually, it's, it's evolved and it's actually neater now in terms of maintaining future road connectivity and creating like parcels that can get subdivided in the future. So at least, you know, we're maximizing the future use of these parcels, which is a good thing. Um, and then it's really just, they had to work around the right of way. They exist right away and they had to work around the wetlands. So that's really what, why we have this, you know, somewhat unusual. It's not neat and tidy like over here where all of the parcels are even and they're all in a row. You know, if these don't get subdivided, they're nice parcels. You know, they're a half acre and, um.
Yeah, the, like during the south, it seems fine. It's up, it's up north, you know, at the beginning of the berry right there. Coming in from Barry, I can see that this, the other side and parcel two and having it, uh, open lot to turn around in, uh, just screams to me problems with anybody and everything going out behind there. And, but that's just whatever. Anyway, um, anybody else got any questions, concerns about this? You're not hearing anybody, you know, opening up the public comment. So again, anybody out there in TV land or watching online, please call in. Katie's going to flash the numbers up on the board again and we can all see that. Liz, do we have anybody here tonight from this project?
Yes, Chairman Mobley. We do have the applicant represented, or the applicant, Bill Thorington is here and then Abe Stevens, the property owner to the south, who submitted the letter is also here.
Liz, can you share?
Oh, yeah.
So while we're waiting, if Katie, if you can cut in, why, uh, just to move things along, if anybody calls in or wants to talk about this, please cut in. But, um, from the applicants, any questions, concerns, comments that you'd like to bring up?
Can you all hear me all right?
Yeah.
I'm Bill Thorington. I'm the developer. I have owned this property, all the parcels involved here and most of those in Landale and along, um, the adjoining streets. And have been, been developing those for the years. And we backed ourselves into a corner. And so I've been working with the city and we have a plan on how to actually.
Bill, can I interrupt you a second?
Sure.
Do you have, uh, your speaker on? Cause I can hear some background feedback.
I'm just talking to my computer.
That sounds better, something. I don't know, you can, I was just hearing feedback, sorry. Go ahead.
This has been a 20 some long year project and we've backed ourselves into this. And so I was kind of stuck with this. This is the most undeveloped property because of the formation of the wetland. So I think, I thank the city planners, Liz and her staff and tremendously for working with us to figure out some way of developing this last parcel so that we can move on. I thi- I think that all the parcels here, these four are all subdividable. I, I, I will say that there probably will be, they will be difficult. They'll require mitigation of the wetlands. Um, but that's going to be up to someone else. But at least the parcels have been designed so that they're all subdividable. They will all have access, which is achievable. And that was my goal is to put this last remaining parcel into a configuration that it could begin to be used residentially. So I do know that regarding parcel two, it was commented on. The access to parcel two is coming off of Guido and Second Avenue. So they aren't going to be involved in the Berry Creek. The Berry Creek turnaround at the top is, the north is only going to be there to access parcel three. And the turnaround obviously is going to be for, um, public utility vehicles and, and service vehicles. So access to three only comes in Berry Creek and they're, they're in and they're out. Parcels two, three and four are all, are, are all accessed from Guido and Second Avenue. Cause all the driveways come off of that, that new section that we're proposing. So I'm open to any suggestions, but at this point, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out a way to work around the wetlands, leave them as an amenity, Greenland. They're beautiful. They've got a lot of nice birds and aquatic animals in them. And so we've bent over backwards to find a way to develop this and still not affect the wetlands, which is why I didn't want to get into mitigation and/or replacement. I wanted to work around those and leave them where they were. Um, so I'm open for questions. I'm very knowledgeable about this property and all the adjacent properties. Cause I've been on this for 20, almost 25 years now, backing down to this last parcel. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katie, we have anybody calling in?
We have Abe Stevens. Uh, give me a moment, let me get him on.
Hi Abe, you there?
Yep, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Absolutely.
All right. Um, so yeah, I'm the one that wrote the letter. Um, I think, um, Liz addressed my concerns pretty well. I think the main one was just, uh, you know, the right of way is aligning. But, uh, I guess we can always follow up on that later. And, uh, just a question for, or maybe just a comment, uh, for city staff. And I don't know, even though if it comes into a play with the planning commission. But I'm just kind of curious, um, regarding, uh, the stormwater runoff, um, just how that would be addressed, if that's going to kind of feed into, um, will kind of feed into the city stormwater system? Or if it will, uh, drain to the wetlands? I'm just kind of curious how that will, you know, how that will be addressed. Cause I, you know, it seems that it could potentially limit the water going to the wetlands. Um, but also, uh, you know, it's, I don't know. I'm just curious is all, I actually don't have a strong opinion on that, you know, and just wondering.
Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody have any questions for?
Um, Bill, I think you probably know that better than I do. I have an understanding, but I think you're going to, I'll have a better idea.
Okay, I'll give it a shot. Um, most of the surface runoff on parcel three and on, on parcel three, at least the west side of three, as well as four, uh, they're all going to run into the wetland using natural drainage. Um, it's going to be done appropriately. Um, we are proposing that the runoff from parcel two is probably going to be collected along the east side, the very backside. And it'll be culverted under the road and along the east side of parcel one. And we're hoping to take discharge that into Strong's Creek. So runoff from parcels two, one and two will probably not affect the wetlands at all. Parcels four and the remainder and most of three are all going to follow natural drainage and will migrate into the wetland as they are now.
Yep.
And the wetland does have an outlet, by the way, right at, uh, its intersection at the bottom of Abe's property at Redwood, uh, Redwood Way. It, it exits there into a storm drainage system, which eventually empties into Strong's Creek. And I developed all that a long time ago, going under Redwood Way and past the, um, Brookdale or whatever it's called today and down into Strong's Creek. So nothing much will change in the drainage, except for we're going to reroute some of it along two and one and two to enter Strong's Creek a little bit earlier than through the wetland.
Yep, yeah, no, I just was curious. I mean, see, I was just reading through the, some of the city, uh, rules and conditions. And it seems like the city really encourages, you know, using the stormwater system and discourages the surface runoff. But, uh, then I was just kind of wondering how that weighs against, you know, the fact that there's wetlands there and, you know, they're kind of dependent on runoff to, you know, to be wetlands, which, I mean, for me, I guess, you know, I don't, I mean, there's pros and cons on both. I just was curious really, so I don't have a strong interest in that, just other than curiosity. So otherwise.
Each parcel will obviously be required to be able to retain for absorption the runoff that's created by their hard surfaces. And so that's following, uh, the code already.
Yep.
So there won't be additional drainage from hard surfaces going into the wetland. I'm only talking about what naturally flows onto the undeveloped land. It's going to follow the course it currently is today.
Yep, okay. Um, so anyway, I don't, I don't have any other big comments or questions. So Katie, you can take me off of public comment section.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you guys.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to Katie. We have anybody else before I do that?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'm looking for a motion to close public comment.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Katie, we need a roll call or not?
Since we have a motion, we will do a roll call. Uh, Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, uh, bringing it back to you guys, uh, anybody else have any comments, concerns, questions about this that we need to talk about? Um, I know it's a big one, especially for you, just starting your first meeting tonight. But, uh, that, when it comes to the wetlands, I know we got to walk gently because of what goes on and the federal rigs. So anybody out there got anything to say?
I feel, um, he has been dealing with this for over 20 years and, uh, the appropriate, um, actions are being taken. So I have no concerns.
I had something real quick. Uh, those future development of wetlands, those become more expensive to develop those, I assume, correct? For the developer and then buyer eventually?
I'm sure they do. No, nothing gets cheaper with time as far as I know, but when you're doing this kind of stuff. But, um, anybody else got anything about that? I just threw a comment out there, I don't know.
I mean, I think that this subdivision is, you know, taking the biggest risk or investment just to bring utilities and improvements to the four parcels. So, you know, for the most part, the infrastructure will be there. But, you know, certainly there will still be some cost. And then, um, to deal with the wetlands, to replace the wetlands would be another, you know, significant cost in hiring, you know, in, in order to get that kind of a permit from the regulatory agencies like Fish, California Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, um, Water Quality Control Board, you would need, uh, you know, biologists and wetland specialists, um, to, um, you know, just kind of analyze the quality, um, find an appropriate location to create new wetlands, um, you know, do all of the wetland kind of mapping and, and designing, um, the replacement feature. And then getting, working that through to get approval from the regulatory agencies. So all of that's going to be kind of a, you know, a pretty good cost, um, paying the consultant for all of that work. So I think that's kind of takes a special person to have that kind of drive to deal with that kind of, um, you know, all the hoops and the uncertainty, buying that property and then getting the permitting. So yeah, the wetland replacement is, is pricey.
Follow up, so is the, the chance is good that some of those, some of that will never happen possibly?
I, I would think so. Yeah, most people work around the wetlands.
Yeah, having been through this, working at where I have been, and it is extremely lengthy. Nobody gets in a hurry to deal with it.
Yeah.
And time goes on and people get tired and people get frustrated and people get, uh, broke. So. Anyway, so anybody else have anything? Give everybody opportunity.
I just think it's about as good a project as you can use, uh, for that location. It's very hard to divide that up and I think it was well planned out. Uh, I agree with what Mark is saying. I, and I understand your concern. I don't see anybody developing that any, those other parcels anytime soon. And that might help protect those wetlands. My only concern earlier was addressed was the runoff. And that was answered for me. So I think it's about as good a project we can find.
All right. Well, looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number P 2021 3056. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna, approving a minor subdivision of a 4.4 acre parcel into four residential lots ranging in size from 0.46 acres to 0.76 acres and a 2.3 acre remainder.
I'll second that.
Can I take a timeout on that? There was something in here about a 25 foot setback also. Does that need to be part of that motion?
Um, you can add it to the motion, just to be sure. I mean, it's in the design, um, and it's in the, the findings, but I think.
I just want to make sure, I just throwing it out there because I remember reading about it, so.
Yeah, why don't you, um, add that to the motion?
I will do that. And amending to that after the words reminder, I would like to add that it would include a 25 foot setback.
To the wetlands.
To the wetlands, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yeah, yes.
And Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
All right, there you go. You're in. Congratulations. Hope it all works out. Okay, so.
Thank you all very much.
Next thing on the agenda, it looks like staff communication. Got a whole mess of stuff back there.
Um, so this is the, we attached the monthly report. This is the monthly report that first goes to the council, all of the city departments. On the second council meeting of the month, submit a monthly report just describing the activities of their department. So, um, this is pretty much, um, similar. I mean, it's similar to the ones you see every month or when we include them. So if you have any questions about anything you see here, let me know. I will just call out the building permit summary on page 58. And then the, because this was for December 2020, um, the building official also prepares an annual report summarizing the whole year. So all of the building permit activity for the whole year on page 59. So I think it's kind of interesting. Um, so he breaks it down by month, um, and value. So he breaks it down by month and value for commercial and residential and then the miscellaneous permits. And then at the bottom, you can see that the total building permits issued for the year was 353 and that included 28 new single family residential building permits and a total of 49 living units. So I guess that means 21, the 28 single family and then 21 units that are either multifamily or ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And then for some reason I thought that we did, I mean, that's a lot for Humboldt County. Definitely Fortuna is the highest in the number of residential permits. I think we're higher than the county, I'm not sure, but we're clearly higher than the other cities. So the building official, for comparison, so 2020 was 28 permits. In 2019, there were 21 single family permits. In 2018, there were 20 single family and 2017, there was 29. So it's, so this is similar. So we're still in a good pace, you know, to maintain the growth and development that Fortuna has been experiencing really for, for many years. So we're just continuing that and we still, seems like we still have a lot of vacant land to maintain that in, at least in our future. Are there any questions about anything?
Liz, what, do we have anything like outstanding that applicants are waiting on? The city or planning or anybody for that? Is there anything holding off out there that we should be looking at or trying to get to the front and center?
I'm glad you asked, Chris. We found that. We've been asked that before and so we put it into the monthly report and it's.
Saw that at the back, that's why.
Well, the, for the projects that are, let's see. Page 55 includes a list of projects that are submitted but not approved yet or not, have not come before the planning commission. And we're, actually, we're down to two. Usually this list is pretty long, but we've got them whittled down. We've gotten a lot of things approved, which you can see on the top half of that table. So the, so we just got Campbell approved. So one of those will get deleted off that bottom part and move up to the top. So the only one there is Gina and Kevin McClendon. They purchased the commercial lot on Fortuna Boulevard that was subdivided off from. Now, so it's adjoining to Alder Place, which is under construction now. Anyway, so there's one and they, that's, you know, the only reason that's on hold is because they want a reduced creek setback, because Rona Creek is on that property. So we're just waiting for the letter. We just advise them, you know, General Plan says we need a letter justifying it. And so that's fairly simple process.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and I think we, what do we have? Okay, was, what's on the next?
We have the, the new fire station.
Fire station is on the, we, oh, on February 9th, we have.
February 9th will be the accurate use permit.
The accurate pest control use permit on Main Street. It's a, like a contractor shop or a service industry that's on Main Street. So that needs a use permit. And then February 23rd will be the Fire District Fire Hall on Ronaville Road. That one, that one will be a big one.
Does have a question about Akron. It looks like they're already moving into that building.
They've got the office remodeled. I'm not sure if they're, have actually moved in. I don't know if, I mean, it's probably, they may have the interior, interior done where they can move in.
I know one of their vehicles was pulled out into the road in Maine when I was going to work and hit me.
Was that one of their service trucks?
Yeah, I saw people going in and out of the building. That's why I was wondering if they're starting to try to move it.
They need their use, they can use the office, but they need their use permit in order to use the, the storage building there and service their trucks. So we'll, we'll, we'll check it out and keep an eye on it.
And it happened about two days ago for me. I think it was Monday.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else anybody want to bring up?
Just want to thank the staff for doing a great job. I think you anticipate a lot of our questions, like what Chris had to say about pending. We appreciate seeing those things.
Great.
Yeah, absolutely, appreciate it. I think a lot of people out there do too. And I know this one, this project's like this subdivision with all the water quality stuff and it just, having dealt with it is just mind, I mean, you get to that point where it just can't stop. You're just like, go away, I don't want to listen to you no more. So thank you so much for that. And our new, and our new commissioner tonight, good. Nice to meet you. Can't wait till everybody can actually go sit down again and we can get back in the office and do things. So I'm looking for a motion to close.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good job, here we go.
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Absolutely.
And Chairman, or Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Everybody stay safe and dry.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.